We'll call to order the regular city council meeting for July 10th, 2023. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, which is united, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no end, just for all.
Thank you all. City Clerk Deaton, could you please let the roll call show? Councilmember Hanson is out of the country at the time. Councilmember Kennedy.
Make a motion to excuse Councilmember Hanson.
I'll support.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Approval of the minutes, June 26, 2023. Councilmember Kibble.
I'll move the minutes. One second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. We have approval of the bills this evening. Councilmember Kennedy.
I'll move the bills.
I'll second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Approval of tonight's agenda. Councilmember Dill.
I'll move the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. We have no consent agenda this evening, so at this time, we'll open the floor for public comment. Please remember to state your name and address, and remember our two-minute time limit, please. Take your time, Mr. Richards.
Good evening, council. Carl Richards, 390 Lennox. Just want to mention one thing. All of you may or may not have noticed that there's activity going on at the Noble Appliance location in the center of town, where we've had so many activities over the years. The building permits all say, this is going to be a doctor's office now. And I guess we're all glad to see something go in there, but in my humble opinion, that's absolutely the wrong fit for the vitality and recovery of our downtown area, which is fragile, really. Something else would be much more advantageous to the community, and like I said, the vitality of the downtown. Anyway, that's it. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Mr. Richards.
Hi, I'm Sharon Sauer, Executive Director of Active Faith Community Services, and my address is still 585 Covington for a little bit. And today is pretty exciting for me personally. I've been working for a long time on a dream for a better community service agency that helps people who have fallen onto difficult times lift up and have a better life. As simply as that's put, it's major. And then hardships that have fallen onto people who are our neighbors, taking that and recreating a different world for them, and that's what we do at Active Faith. And we see that every week that we're open. Today was no different. We had 119 families, I was almost going to say people, but it's families that came in today, and a lot of those are children. And so, we recently have just started our back-to-school program, where each one of our food pantry children will be given a brand-new backpack and school supplies when the school season starts. But our goal at Active Faith is that you don't feel like a food pantry child, that you don't feel like you're a food pantry family, that you just feel like family. And what does family do for one another? They help one another. So my news today is that our long-awaited dream of having a building and a location that represents our heart and soul of lifting others up in this community has happened. So we are now the new owners of 553 Lafayette in South Lyon. I have two board members with me today, Ken and Pat, and they're here because they're happy and excited as well, and held the same dream that we all have. Moving forward, I've been talking to Paul a little bit about, you know, maybe that we can work with the city, you know, to kind of increase the involvement of city government in what we do. We are 35 years plus, going strong, you guys, and it's not going to end. So as long as there are need, and as long as there's people that need a little helping hand, Active Faith will be there, and I want to thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll close our public comment and move on to the discussion of downtown with DDA Director Nate Mack.
All right, good evening, Mayor, council. First up, what we have for you is a discussion about the grant that I've been talking about. That was submitted on June 29th to the MEDC. Our total request was about a little over $600,000 to build a park downtown, because we already have some funding, and the DDA and city have contributed some funding. We'll be hearing back sometime in September on the news on that, whether we've been successful or not. We're hoping that we have a pretty competitive application, so hopefully, we have some good news come September. The farmer's market again. Last weekend, weather was a little touch-and-go, but it was another good market. The Economic Vitality Committee of the DDA met last week as well, and they worked on an activity called Asset Mapping, which is something that highlights the positive things that are in and around the downtown that we can kind of focus on to help progress the downtown, looking at doing that activity, and then kind of fleshing that out some more, and eventually turning it into an economic strategy for the downtown as a whole. We're continuing to, or I'm continuing to work on social district implementation, so the application has been submitted to the state of Michigan. We're looking to get a number of different things that we can put in the gathering area by the farmer's market, which includes tables and chairs, umbrellas, some faux ivy, some faux grass, twinkle lights, garbage cans, and maybe some games to go there as well. So I think it'll look pretty nice once we get it all set up. I met with DPW there last week to kind of go over the layout of the space, and that should be good. We have not heard back from the state of Michigan on the status of the city's application, however, we can't implement or have the social district go into effect until we get approval from the state, as well as the ordinances amended, which is the second reading tonight to allow for open alcohol in the social district. The 150th Anniversary Story Project continues to progress. We've narrowed it down to about 20 stories that we'll be working on. I think it's going to be pretty cool once that debuts. It'll be probably around Pumpkin Fest, so. And then finally, social media training dates for businesses in the city. Those have been selected. The first one will be Wednesday, August 9th at 10:00 a.m., and the second one is Wednesday, August 30th at 10:00 a.m. I'm excited for that. That's, you know, based off of the business survey that we conducted earlier this year, and hopefully, we get some attendees there for that, and it'll be good. All right, with that, I'll be open to any questions if anybody has any.
Councilmember Dill.
Just a couple things. Do you have any information on what Mr. Richards was talking about with Noble Appliance?
Only rumors. I can't really say anything other than that. So I've heard some rumors, but.
Okay. I also wanted to say that I really appreciate you setting up this social media training. I think that a lot of times, people get surveyed and nothing ever happens with it, so I really appreciate that kind of a follow-through. And then, just at a wild guess on approvals, do you have any idea when a social district could potentially happen?
I do not, unfortunately. I called them again to see, because I called them before any of this stuff went to city council, and they said they're not able to give me a date on it, and I called them again. I said, hey, we passed, the city council passed the social district. Any idea on when we can expect some feedback? And they said, no, we can't.
So I assume that nobody can apply yet, then?
So I've gotten, they can apply on the city side, so I've sent that application. Thanks for asking that question. I've sent that to all the six bars and restaurants that are eligible. I've gotten one back. I've had a few questions from some other folks on the application. I'm helping them work through that, and then I'm also looking to help find a source for the cups for the initial order.
That's what I was going to ask, so that I can at least get going, so when it comes in, I'll have it.
Yep.
Okay, great. Thanks so much.
Councilmember Kibble.
The economic development director aspect of your job, do you have a parallel for what's going on in the downtown, in the DDA, with the groups that you're doing things to try to spark some new adventures going on in the DDA? Have you considered doing something like that on a grander scale through the rest of the city, the merchants in the rest of the city?
So are you, I guess the, I mean, part of the DDA stuff, like the social media training, that's going to be available to everybody. But as far as like working with different groups, a lot of the groups that I work with, like the Main Street Oakland County program, that's just geared towards the downtown. You know, the overall economic development strategy for the city, that's something that I continue to work on, and hopefully, to have something there for everybody, so.
I would encourage you to end up trying to make relationships with people that are outside of the DDA, so that you'll have people that will have a genuine interest, and you'll know whether or not they're going to bring something to the party in the event that you were to put some kind of a package together. Okay, so the other thing I wanted to wonder about was, we were at the concert in the park on Friday night, and it was being bounced around whether or not there's a chance of being able to get the social district sanctioned to be able to have a beer at the park, and I don't know how that would actually roll. I was just wondering, has there been any kind of discussions at all about that?
So there is, I mean, I've thought about that. However, in order to have the social district extend to the park, you have to have the commons area go all the way from where it is in downtown continually through to the park, because you're only allowed to have one social district. And, yeah, so I mean, it would be a lot greater enforcement. There's issues with, you know, people traveling that distance with an open alcohol. And I think the intent of the social district law is really geared towards downtowns, because you have to have those, you know, those licensed businesses that are contiguous to the social district, yeah.
Oh, well, it was asked of me, and I just thought I'd pass that along.
Yeah, the, yeah, the big hiccup would be.
Modified somehow.
Oh, sorry. I didn't mean to cut you off. The big hiccup would be just trying to figure out how to manage it, because there's not really any bars or restaurants, well, I guess the which is has closest to McCatty Park, but then you would have all of those, you know, all that space between.
Well, like the pride thing, too. I mean, that was another example of, you know, that wouldn't have been horrible had that had the ability for, if people wanted to have.
Another, another option for that, instead of extending the social district, would be to get a nonprofit to pull a permit through the MLCC. So they get their, I think it's like 10 or 12 temporary one-day licenses where you can designate a drinking area, and then people can conserve alcohol there. So when I was in Jackson, we did that, working with one of the nonprofits in town. For our downtown concerts, we had a drinking area that was basically around the stage in a park downtown. They got the permit for that day. They were able to sell beer and wine down, you know, down there, and then when the, when the event was over, you couldn't do it anymore. So just for that time period.
It doesn't seem nearly as onerous as trying to set it up with the social district.
Correct, yeah.
Right, okay. All right, well, thank you very much.
All right, thanks for the update, Nate. Move on to the fire chief report tonight.
Lieutenant Cindy Conrad with South Lyon Fire. Just a few little things tonight. Our run number to date, 692 calls. Yesterday, we had a mutual aid to Salem Township to assist on a structured fire. We were able to send a five-person crew, and our people got wonderful experience working on a structured fire. And in case you didn't know, with our mutual aid departments, we work all very well together. We have great relationships built. And lastly, Wednesday is supposed to be the spray park, but we're expecting rain and 72 degrees, so we've moved it to Friday.
Okay.
Sunny, 82 degrees.
That sounds good.
Much better day for that.
All right. Friday, that starts at what time, forgive me?
1:00 to 2:00.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
You can't lose that. That's just too big.
Right.
All right, move on to the police chief report, without both chiefs tonight. Thank you, Lieutenant.
Lieutenant Chris Thedron, City of South Lyon Police. Not a whole lot to report. After a long wait, we finally got our Chevy Tahoe. It's been two years. That came in on July 5th. That'll be put into patrol use once the emergency equipment is ordered, once we strip out one of the other cars with Synergy and Troy. Firework complaints between July 1st and July 9th, there were five of them. There was no reports of any injuries or any citations issued. All of our firearms instructors were sent to a three-day training session at the Oakland Police Academy for our new red dot sighting system. That will be on our new nine-millimeter handguns, which we hope to have in the next few months. Once we get those, everybody that carries a nine-millimeter will go to a full day of training for these red dot sights. So we received complaints of speeding in a construction zone on Hagadorn Street. We're running radar there, and we also got the speed sign out there. So we are on that, and the Pride event at McCatty Park, I spoke to the officers there. They said it was a great event, good turnout, good food, and there was no reports of any concerns or issues related there. And we're currently still looking for applicants for police officer, now we're also police cadet, and also crossing guard.
Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead.
Thank you. I had a lot of questions over the weekend about the new law pertaining to use of cellphones in cars. Do you have a moment that you could just sort of maybe provide a little bit of a public notice as to what exactly that means? And I'll tell you what the big question is. The big question I got, and I assume you can't, I don't know, I don't even want to say it, but you're, you have your cellphone on, and you're using it for directions. So you're using it to get from point A to point B. Does that, is that an event, because the cellphone is on in the car, an event that could potentially, I could be ticketed for?
The GPS is an exception, however, you don't want to be having your hand like this.
Right.
You can either go through your screen, you can have it sitting down, you can listen to it, it's just in your hands. So you put it on speakerphone if you're on the phone, keep it down. Right now, we're issuing, we put it on our website for, to update people, and we're also handing out flyers, so when we stop someone from doing it now, we're educating them, saying, here's the new law, instead of issuing citations.
Excellent.
So it's going to take some time.
It will.
Okay.
And all the old cars don't have the systems where it runs through the speakers, so.
That was great. Councilmember Kurtzwell. Councilmember Dill.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, for the entire event, there was one officer there, but a lot of times, there were three at the Pride event, and they were absolutely wonderful, engaging with, with, with the people there, talking with the organizers. I think they had a good time. I just wanted to say how much I appreciated seeing that kind of support.
Yes, Officer Steve and Sergeant Baker and Officer Walton.
Correct, yep. Thank you so much. That's all.
Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
I've had a number of people come up to me with concerns about, you know, they see you guys parked down trying to look for the trucks that are turning on, on the downtown corner. They're more concerned right now, because there's a lot of pedestrian traffic that really feel as though they're, they're putting themselves in jeopardy. There's, there's people that have a car full of kids that are scrambling from the school to get to some other event, and, you know, they've got to go, 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 and, you know, when you're walking a dog, an older dog, any dog, actually, or, or a child, the idea of having to grab them up and run across the road is a little bit far-fetched. So they were hoping that you guys could end up having a stronger presence, just to try to quell some of the people that are just, don't seem to understand what's going on. That would be very helpful.
You referring to the crosswalks?
Yes.
Yes, we're, we have guys, I sent an email out last week on that. We have guys down there watching it. In fact, I believe Officer Stroff just stopped a vehicle for going through the crosswalk and, and he ended up getting arrested out of that, so.
Well, I don't want to end up making it sound as though this is my corner or anything, but it happens often at our corner, because that's where the school is. So when, when you're, they're going for, to play in the part of the school or whatever, you know, I mean, there's an awful lot of that kind of traffic, foot traffic going out there, so. And all the dogs seem to coordinate, I should say, in that area, so.
Right.
All right, that's enough. Thanks.
Thank you. Thanks for the update, Lieutenant. Appreciate it. On to unfinished business this evening. DDA Social District, second reading of an ordinance to amend the City of South Lyon Code of Ordinances, Chapter 8, Alcoholic Liquor of the City of South Lyon Code of Ordinances to Article 3, Social Districts.
All right, on July 21st, 2020, Governor Whitmer signed House Bill 5781, creating the social district permit, which allows the local government to designate a social district within their jurisdiction. Businesses that are granted a social district permit may sell alcoholic liquor, beer, wine, mixed spirits, or mixed drinks on their licensed premises to customers, who may then consume the alcoholic liquor within the commons area of the social district. Local governments may designate a social district that contains a commons area. During the June 26, 2023 meeting, the city council voted to approve the resolution establishing the sidecar social district and the management and maintenance plans for the district. Additionally, the city council passed the first reading of an ordinance to, of an ordinance amendment of the alcoholic liquor chapter of the Code of Ordinances to allow for the consumption of alcoholic beverages in the sidecar social district. Therefore, in order for the social district to come into effect, a second reading of the City of South Lyon's alcoholic liquor code shall be amended to allow for the consumption of alcoholic beverages in the sidecar social district.
Councilmember Kennedy.
I'd go ahead and just make the motion to approve the second reading of the, of an ordinance to amend the City of South Lyon Code of Ordinances, Chapter 8, Alcoholic Liquor of the City of South Lyon Code of Ordinances to Article 3, Social Districts.
I'll support.
You know, motion by Councilmember Kennedy, supported by Councilmember Mosier. Do we have any further discussion? City Clerk Deaton, could you lead us in a roll call vote, please? Yes.
First one?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Motion passes.
No clapping.
Not this week. Thanks, Nate. No new business this evening, so we will touch on the budget. Does anyone have anything on the budget tonight? Okay. Thanks for being here, Patricia. We'll now open the floor for our second public comment. Please remember to state your name and address, and remember our two-minute time limit. If we don't have anyone for public comment this evening, we'll move on to the manager's report with city manager Zellner.
Thanks, Mayor. On a future city council agenda, we'll have the award of the CSX Rural Road Sanitary Sewer Project, as well as the intergovernmental agreements with the South Lyon School Senior Activity Center in Green Oak Township and Lyon Township. Update on Hagadorn Sanitary Sewer and Road Paving Project. The project continues. They were installing and removing sanitary sewer on Hagadorn, close to 10 miles today, and they're continuing to work on that over the next several weeks, and road rebuilding project is, the road rebuilding portion is expected to begin in early August. The trail construction from Volunteer Park to Princeton continues. They were working on some of the areas today, and expected to finish that up this week. I had another meeting last week with our other jurisdictions regarding Oakland County Transit and the transit services within the City of South Lyon. We work with the county officials to lower transit fares, as well as increase distances that individuals within the community can transfer and move through Smart and WOTA and other locations with the assistance of People Express. I did provide city council with an update on some of the fares that were being discussed at the meeting, and that is going to be going before Oakland County Commissioners this coming month. And that's all I have right now. Be happy to answer any questions that anyone may have.
Councilmember Kurtzwell.
I just want to let you know that this flyer, project flyer, was very, very appreciated by the people over there on Hagadorn. I think this is a very, very important way to communicate. I just want to commend you and staff for getting this out. I think the three most pieces of information that's on here that was appreciated, you actually gave people names and phone numbers of who to contact and to ask questions. I just think this is such a good move, and hopefully, this will be part of the model that will be used as we move through the cities, providing this kind of communication. They loved it. Everybody really enjoyed it. I got several phone calls on this, so good job. Thank you.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Just a few things from around the city, Paul, just curious. Do we have a tentative date when that company's going to come and reposition the lights in the trees downtown? I think we talked about that previously. They were going to actually come in and distribute them higher on the trees and everything?
Yeah, Nate and I haven't talked about the exact date for that yet, because we need to obviously get the company to do that, but we also have somebody come in that'll be doing trimming the trees as well, so that's another part of that whole project. No specifics at date.
Do we know when that dead tree in front of the post office is coming down, and when that hole will be filled in with the gravel like the other ones?
Well, we're going to be looking at, and Nate and I had a meeting and discussed with the planner regarding different types of trees that we're going to be installing within the downtown, and it is on the DPW's list to be removed. I don't know the exact date that Jeff had for that replacement, though.
Just to the north of Heritage, on the west side of Pontiac Trail, there's a dead tree there. I believe it's probably in the Oakland County right-of-way. And if that's the case, should someone be contacting Oakland County to take that tree down? It's right by the walkway, the sidewalk that crossed the back of Colonial Acres there. Can somebody take a look at that? And if we need to have Oakland County take that down, have them do so?
We will report it to them.
And finally, the gazebo that's in the DDA is totally overgrown with weeds, vines, and everything else that's next to Creative Hair Salon. Okay, we stripped that out once before last year. It doesn't look like it's been touched since, so it's in dire need of attention, okay? That's all I had. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Kittle.
The guy that was trimming the trees on this facility today, when I came in, I actually saw him cutting the branches up, so you don't have to fold yourself over to try to walk down through the sidewalk. So I went down and said that he was my hero, and he was grateful for that comment, because it was quite warm all day today, so, and he, he worked all day long out there. So I was grateful. I'd like to see that in a lot more areas where people have to stoop to be able to get, get on the sidewalk and, and clear a tree. Oh, for heaven's sakes. Yeah, okay. I guess it just kind of slipped my mind. I've forgotten what I, oh, I know what it was. It was actually, I'm sorry, the transit thing. I really like the angle that you're playing with this, to coordinate with these outer elements, rather than us trying to end up leaning too hard and probably failing a lot by not having enough scale to be able to do something of real substance. I think this is a great way to end up making our, being able to get people moved from A to B a lot farther and a lot easier, so I'm really happy to see what you're doing there.
The group's been really good to work with, with representatives of Wolverine Lake, Wixom, Commerce, Lyon Township, and Milford, Milford Township. You know, the residents of the area may see an increase in actual fares, but the distance that they can travel is going to be 10 times farther than they ever could before, instead of just a limited difference, limited distance. And now, working with the county, being able to connect to a potential location in Novi, and be able to get to Southfield, or Pontiac, or Ferndale, or Rochester, or whatever it may be, which I think is going to be the key. And the county's been very good to work with. At first, they didn't necessarily understand what our needs were, because we're working with one of the only private companies, WOTA, OPC, the other organizations, NOTA. They are entities that are providing services, but they're already tied into several jurisdictions, and some of them are not-for-profits, and we've been able to show how Peoples Express really works for our area, instead of tying in with one of the other organizations. So they've, they've been good to work with. Sometimes it's had, had some very spirited conversations, but we think it's going to work in the, in the long run.
Well, I think we're really fortunate that there was a mindset in the other smaller communities that were sort of on the same page as us, so that, you know, the conflicts aren't being spun from there. It's trying to get the big people to see that, you know, we're not, our, our cut of the kitty for this whole thing for Oakland County. the kitty for this whole thing for Oakland County is grossly out, outdoing what we're getting services for. So, I'm grateful that everybody is struggling and fighting to try to get this thing built more, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kibble. We'll move on to council comments this evening.
Oh, it's okay.
Oh.
It's all right. All I was going to say was the same kind of, I was going to just go along with that path, but I'm fine. I'm good.
Well, you're leading us off on council comments.
Make something up.
All right. I just have some, a couple of quick things. I wanted to just say how proud I am of Sharon and the Active Faith Board, and for, for, you know, having this come to fruition. And I just want to say that when you're making this move, to let people know what help you need. Put out a volunteer signup genius. Do something like that, and people will help. I know I will. So, whatever, you know, whatever you need to do, I, you know, ask people to volunteer. I think people will be very happy. And I saw the movement over there. Money also. Tell people what you need. And then I just wanted to say how thrilled I was that the weather cooperated when it looked like it wasn't going to. Had a huge weekend this weekend. There was a huge baseball event. There was Pride in the Park. There was the mini food rally at the farmer's market, and I just missed something. I know I did. Anyway, it was really great, and I don't think anybody was at a lack of things to eat in South Lion with all those food trucks around. So, really appreciate everybody coming out, having a great time all over South Lion, and making it a great place to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dill. Councilmember Kurtzwell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I also would like to congratulate Sharon, and to the board of directors that are here tonight, Ken Knaisel and Pat Poruski. Thank you, both of you. You have, you've given so much to Active Faith over the years, in fact, decades, I think, is probably a better word. So, thank you, Ken, and everybody. Please send my wishes back to the board of directors, and you got my phone number, so. Next, the Culture Arts Commission is getting ready to roll out their Did You Know series. Very, very interesting series that's going to be published throughout the city in the frames, and that deals with, did you know about certain historical places in the city? And this is in conjunction with the city's 150th anniversary. Like to thank the Culture Arts Commission and Linda Ross from the Historical Society for putting this program together. Also, Doug from Lake Street Cruisin, he finally got me the list of the sponsors, and so I want to spend the rest of my council comment sort of thanking them. These sponsors just do so much for the City of South Lion. I want to make sure we give them good credit. Advanced Capital Management out of South Lion, thank you so much for supporting the Cruisin. Alta Equipment Company out of New Hudson, thank you so much. I see your equipment everywhere with the large letters on it. Bell's Landscape Service in South Lion, boy, do I know Bell's. Great job, just a great company. Bullet Distributors, South Lion, Gary, good friend. Bullet, thank you so much. Thank you, Bullet Distributors. Detroit Hot Rod Sport and Custom out of Plymouth. Boy, have I got a car for you to fix. So, I'm glad you're here and supporting Lake Street Cruisin. We also have Dream Maker Bath and Kitchen out of Van Arbor and South Lion. If you ever want a kitchen done, I'll tell you, there's a reason why they call it Dream Maker Bath and Kitchen. Great place. Eastlake Dental, thank you for staying in South Lion. And Gibson Tool and Broach out of Westland. So, for tonight, those are the sponsors. There's more to come. Thank you so much for supporting Lake Street Cruisin. And last, please don't forget, July 29th is going to be a very busy, busy Saturday in the City of South Lion, from about eight in the morning till midnight. So, just pack your bags and be ready to spend the weekend in South Lion Downtown. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurtzwell. Councilmember Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Basically, tonight, I want to remind everyone about Friday's Concert in the Park. It'll start at 7:00 p.m. This week, they'll be featuring the One Love Reggae, as they return to South Lion for this year. So, make a point to come out and enjoy some soul, jazz, rock, and funk. Also, on Saturday, July 15th, Raysock will be holding a hazardous household waste collection event at the Wixom DPW, located at 2041 Charms Road. So, gather up all those leftover hazardous waste items from the garage and drop them off at the yard between 9:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. And talking about July 29th, so while you're marking your calendar, don't forget the all-day Lake Street Motor Fest will take place on that day from 11:00 a.m. till 5:00 p.m. Magic Bus will be providing the entertainment. And then later the same day, it'll be Christmas in July, presented by Carl and Joanne Foundation, starting at 4:00 p.m. They'll have several food trucks, and entertainment will be provided by the Williamsburg Band and the Phoenix Theory Band. So, got some great things coming up in the city, so make plans now to attend. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Kennedy. Councilmember Mosier.
I also want to add my congratulations to Active Faith, and thank you for everything you do in our community. I don't know what we would do without you. You guys have been around for years, and that's enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mosier. Councilmember Kibble.
More of the same. I was really enjoying the origin story. It was kind of funny. My wife and I moved into South Lion in 87, and I didn't know that it was 10 churches that ended up kind of holding hands and trying to figure out how we help people that need some help. And I thought that was a great, a great start, and the other thing I would say is, you made some mention of kind of leaning on us for some help on things, and I'm really looking forward to, and very interested in, and hope that I can comply with whatever it is that you'd like to ask us. I think you're going to find us to be able to do some, maybe not all, but certainly looking forward to trying to, to help. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kibble. Yeah, congratulations to our friends at Active Faith on your forever home, hopefully. Awesome, awesome job by everyone involved. And then, the only thing I got is, I'm looking forward to Saturday, the American Legion Golf outing out at Rolling Meadows. I can assure you that my team will not win, but we're going to have a lot of fun, and those guys do a great job here in the community, and they're always, they make sure that the money that they raise here goes to, you know, our kids and scholarships in the community.